You'll look in your packet, you do see a list of items, but we've already covered those items in last week's meeting. And I'm sure Mr. Bridger does not want to go through those again, and neither does anyone up here. So, we have sufficiently covered those, and I appreciate you working through that. John, is our, just to set the tone real quick, is our goal today? We want to do our minutes?
Yeah.
I will take a motion for our minutes. Thank you. Will you want to give us an overview on what you're hoping to do, picking up where we left off last week when we ran short of time?
Basically, we'll cover three topics, just follow up on the accessory dwelling unit, because I know they got rushed toward the end, and y'all were getting hungry, I think. It's getting close to dinnertime. So, be sure to kind of cover some of that a little bit. And then hit on steep slopes, flood plains, just give you an update on our project with that. And then give you a briefing on the C2 special permit that you indicated y'all are interested in developing as a new tool. So, those are the three items. If I could get this linked, I've got it on On. There we go. So, those are the three topics we're going to cover. First, exciting dwelling unit ordinance. I know we kind of really blazed through that pretty fast. And I think the two things I heard is, I want to make sure you have ample time for public review and feedback, but also to give you all opportunity as council to review the ordinance and give us some feedback. So, then when we come back to you as a body, we can have a conversation about what you like or don't like about the current draft of the ordinance. But I think to be able to have that conversation in an informed way, you need to have the draft ordinance to look at. So, what we're going to do is, I might have Emily send you all the draft ordinance, so that you all can be looking at it and think about, ask questions of us as staff. The other thing we want to do is we want to have another public hearing. So, we actually have a pretty light caseload at our February Planning Commission meeting, so we're going to publicize that as a formal public hearing on the ADU ordinance, so we can get additional public comments and feedback on the ordinance. And then what I would propose is that we'll take the feedback we get from that forum, as well as your comments on the draft, and from that, we can develop a set of questions that you all can discuss as a council, as a body, to kind of, as we look at review and evaluating the proposal. So, that way, we have a kind of an informed base of having a conversation around the draft. So, open up any questions about that?
Councilman Henderson.
John, I think the question that came up last time about public input and the feedback is, you know, a lot of what we designed or how we crafted that was based on, you know, like 100 and something responses, I think.
Yep.
And I guess the question would be, what do you see doing differently that you're going to get more input? I mean, there's really no reason to put it off or to continue if we're not doing something differently to engage.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's not, I mean, we've kind of exhausted avenues that we have, as far as, you know, we've gone to the Neighborhood Leadership Roundtable. We put an online survey. We've met with residents individually, as well as development interests individually. So, we've done what we can through the contacts and resources we have. We thought one other option would be, is we could do a more broadly publicized, we can put an ad in the paper about a public hearing in February to give additional stakeholders an opportunity to give feedback before we come back to you. But, yeah, I think, I'm not sure what else we could do above and beyond that within the resources we have as a staff. If you've got some thoughts, I'm open to hearing them.
When, is it, is it possible to get a questionnaire out? We obviously know all the neighborhood associations that meet.
Right.
Is it possible to get a questionnaire out to those presidents to let them poll their neighborhood associations, or have we?
We've done that.
We've done, we've actually done that? The reason I say that is because I'm, well, at least two that meet on a pretty regular basis, it was never mentioned in any of the, that I can remember from the president, any of the neighborhood associations about any kind of questionnaire.
Right. We, well, let me, Emily could come up and describe exactly what the nature, how that was done, that might help.
Hi, council. So, the RPA maintains a listserv of all the neighborhood association presidents. So, I sent emails and letters to 95 registered presidents with the information about the project, link to our website, and asked them to distribute it to all their neighborhood association members. So, aside from, I guess, knocking on doors, as John said, I don't know what other ways we could do that. So, if they didn't distribute that information, then I think that's out of the RPA's hands. But, we at least attempted to do that.
Very good. Good, councilman. Councilman Burrs.
Is this on? Yeah. Yeah, I too was worried by the sample, as you know, because you're usually going to hear just from the people that want it for some reason. And they should have that right to do that. I'm wondering if you thought about doing it a different way. Instead of going that route.
Okay.
I would love for you, instead of us being presented something by you, like I suggested before, I would love a session with you all.
Right.
So that we're not put in the position of correcting or changing what you come up with.
Okay.
I think that something like this should be organic, and that it should come from a meeting with, of us with you.
Right.
And have us talk about the various concerns that we've got. Like, I think the dwelling units can be fine. When you lob something out there, and then we have to respond.
Right.
Rather than react, I would love to be in the position of proacting.
Right.
And when you put us in the position of reacting, I could proact if I had a meeting, if I met with my folks in the various neighborhoods. I've heard nothing from my neighborhoods about that. Lots of times, they go in the round file. We think everybody just lives on email. They don't.
Right.
I wish they did, but they don't, as far as research is concerned. So, I think if you had an educational meeting with us.
Okay.
All of us, perhaps in strategic planning or something like that, and listened to the various concerns we have, and not just commit a suicide and think that we're going to come a certain way or another, it would be very, very helpful. It's really hard to constantly be putting in the position of reacting.
Sure.
When we could be sitting around a table, collaborating, and coming up with something from the front end.
Just, you know, it's been a long time, but we did something similar to that about a year ago, when this started. Because, remember, we came with a, at the time, it was a special permit that said, hey, we actually think it might, you want to develop a tool. You gave us some direction. Just so you know, we, this did not come out of a vacuum.
I remember when it came out.
Yeah.
It came out. And then, I still think that when you're talking about the various zoning things, because now it's getting to the tipping point in Chattanooga, right?
Right.
And we're balancing new ideas with property rights from people that are the bedrock of the city. And I'm just thinking that if we could collaborate, not just get ideas from us, and then you lob it out there, the experts lob it out.
Right.
If we could sit down and talk, just talk, about the kinds of things that we want, or we see happening. In other words, how do you get to yes, as opposed to being just to positioned? I think it might be a better, more satisfactory result. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Burrs. I'm seeing no other lights on ADU discussion, John, but let me add this. We've had pretty extensive discussion. This is a growing, very popular item throughout the country. I've seen it start on the West Coast, Florida, and moving its way all around. And it does, I think, have the potential to solve a lot of housing shortage problems. I think it's a great tool for keeping families together, and having the capability to have an in-law or an aging parent in place, or whatever your family needs. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a wonderful idea. I do, and I express concerns about this type and some of the regulations. And I think, if it's okay with the council, I feel like we need a little bit to piggyback on Dr. Burrs's comments. We need a little bit more education on what exactly an ADU is, number one. Number two, some real-life scenarios, using maybe real-life properties, as an example for us to see how this may work. And that way, we can, as a council, maybe visualize a little bit better the pros and the cons to a neighborhood. I have to say, also, I'm a little concerned that we only got 170 folks back responding to our, I mean, it kind of feels like no one cares.
Yep.
And this is a pretty big impact to properties and neighborhoods when we started building additional units. So, I think we need probably a little bit more education on this, if the council agrees, so we can wrap our heads around this a little bit more.
So, in cases of, so do we, one option, if Councilman Burrs suggests a strategic planning session, would, do you like us to come by? We could, I know Emily put together a kind of overview last time. It's been a while since you've seen it, but we could kind of bring that back to make sure we're all, it's fresh, kind of, again, what ADU is, and how, different examples of how it's working in Chattanooga, and do that strategic planning, and maybe have a conversation on, I call it hopes and fears, meaning, here's what we'd like to see happen, here's what I'm worried could go wrong, I'm seeing some nods, is that? Okay, so when will be, what will be the next strategic planning session to do that?
Looking around the, the DAS here, and everybody, would you like to know more about ADUs? Yes? Okay.
Two weeks?
Two weeks. We'll look at our chairman and see if.
Okay. Good. We'll pencil it in.
And we're talking about.
Just wait till you're back.
We're talking strategic planning.
Yeah, strategic planning, as I understand it.
1:30.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Dr. Burrs, do you have another comment?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, so you won't be presenting something to us?
That's right. It'll be a discussion, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a very brief context, to, again, just make sure you're familiar with what it is we're talking about in terms of just ADUs. Then, it'll be a discussion dialogue amongst council. We'll make, throw some questions for y'all to kind of stimulate the conversation, but it'll be a conversation, as I understand, kind of, based on what you understand about it, what would you like to see? And what are some, maybe some concerns that could go wrong that you might be worried about?
Thank you. I think that would be very, very helpful.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Burrs. John, I've got, I've seen no other lights on this particular sub, wait a minute, I think I do see one. Chairman Smith?
Hey, John, in the next steps where it says submit ordinance draft to council, how far along are you, or are you even far along at all with doing any kind of draft ordinance?
Yeah, we've got one drafted.
Have you circulated that at all?
Not yet.
All right. Would you? At least I would like to see it prior to, prior to the meeting, just to have an idea legislatively what you had in mind, so that I may be able to be better prepared for that 1:30 session.
Sure. We'd be happy, at least that's for reference. Be happy to.
Yeah, just for reference.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, chairman.
Mr. Bridger.
All right, on to steep slopes.
All right.
Just to give you an update, okay, here we go. We have assembled our advisory committee, and first, I want to remind everybody of what the role of that committee is and is not. It is a, as you know, it's important when we're doing this kind of work, because it is complicated. Flood plains and steep slopes, both have unique aspects to them that require some careful thought and consideration. And you want to have folks bring in both a perspective, those who actually are in the development business, but also who could be impacted by what happens in development. So, we're thinking clearly residents and developers, and development professionals. But, and I think it's an opportunity for them to also to communicate with each other, so they can hear each other and understand from each other's perspective, for us as staff, also, to learn from that. So, that's, things are almost like a focus group, but it is not a decision-making group. I want to be clear about that. Staff will be using that input in addition to some public meetings that we're going to have during the process, to inform some potential strategies and options that we'll present to you all as council. And just to kind of let you know, we've gotten, basically five residents, and five builders, and professionals, and one real estate, legal, technical person, Mike Malin. So, we've got the residents, Philip Clay, James Havering, Bob Geyer, Tim McDonald, and Jim Johnson. Builders and development professionals, we have Chris Mayby, who's a builder and Planning Commission member, Mike Croxel, Jason Farmer, who's a Realtor and PC member, Donna Adams, who's an engineer, and Micah Duffy, who's an engineer. And so, again, that's just, all that is, is a sounding board. We're also going to have some larger public meetings, that we'll be asking the same questions of the public. This is just provides a smaller focus group to have more in-depth conversations. In terms of the overall flow, we will be kicking off our advisory committee right now. We have one tentatively scheduled for this week, from this coming Friday. During the period of January to March, we're really focused on identifying the challenges, understanding what's going on currently with steep slopes and flood plains, as well as framing those values and principles that inform how we think about evaluating this potential strategy. So, we'll be having a public forum either toward the end of February or early March, depending on when we get the analysis done, because it's important, before we have that forum, that at least you've got some good information to talk about and have a conversation about. So, we want to get the analysis done first, as far as documenting the current situation with steep slopes and flood plains. So, once that's done, we will have a public forum to talk about, again, what are the, why are we addressing this problem? What do we hope to accomplish? What are we worried about? Kind of the same thing, hopes and fears. What would you like to see? What are you concerned about? So that, from that, we can frame some principles that will guide the development, or the evaluation of the strategies. Then, in April, May, we will start to be thinking about potential strategies. So, once we've got a clear understanding of the problem, and our core values, how we approach the problem, we'll begin to frame some potential strategies. We'll be, again, meeting with our advisory committee on a monthly basis, we'll be also updating you as a council monthly, and then have another public forum sometime in, again, late April, early May, to get the community's feedback on the strategy. So, as we frame, here's some potential paths, what do you think about that? You know, is there a path that seems to make more sense for you as a citizen? So, once we get all that feedback, then we will develop a formal report that'll include the analysis that was done, the strategies that were considered, and of course, our recommendation as staff. But you will also see all the other strategies that were considered, so you have your opportunities as council to choose a strategy you think makes, that fits best for the city. So, and then, once you direct us from that report, the particular tool to develop, we'll build the tool. But the point of this is to have that analysis done, thinking about strategies, and then identify the strategies, so that we develop the tool based on that feedback. Does anybody have any questions? This is just the overall scope of what we're doing.
John, I do have one question, and Councilman Mitchell, if you'll allow me, just to ask a question of the city attorney right before I get to you. I noticed two names on your committee.
Yes.
Were two planning commissioners. Is there an open meetings issue there?
Uh, that's a good point. Phil, what do you think?
If there's any deliberation, it would have to occur in a public meeting, in that regard, if you've got two or more members of the body entitled to give recommendations to them.
Okay, so we'll have to, that's, you know, I didn't, I should have thought of that.
We need to double back on that.
Thank you. Good catch.
Thank you for, and Councilman Mitchell, thank you for waiting. Go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, got a comment and two questions. One question would be, is there anything in your planning timeline that would allow this body to take a look at some of the mistakes we've made in the past? Actual subdivisions?
Yes.
That we really allowed something to happen, that really screwed something up?
That's part of the assessment. That first phase is analyzing what's working, what's not with our current. So, we'll look at what are some of those problem sites and why. So, try to understand, and what are the gaps? What's, so, as you know, how you frame the solution is largely in part how you frame the problem.
Okay.
So, yes, we are going to look at, and if you have any particular sites that you think fit that bill, I encourage you to send that to Brian's attention, and we'll certainly take a look at those.
Okay. All right, great. Second question, at one time, the council was talking about making field trips. I don't know if the council still wants to do that, or if we should pass this group to do that. I just, I don't know what the pleasure of the council is, Mr. Chair.
I'm still in favor of the field trips. I think it'd be great to spend time with you.
I want to hear a comment on that. Councilman Mitchell?
I think there's a joke in there somewhere. All right, and the next thing would be a comment, and you've picked your group, it looks like you might have to alter it a little bit for the sake of public.
Yes.
In the future, I would like to certainly see more sexual and racial diversity.
Sure.
On a group like this, because that's what Chattanooga is, and I think I saw one female, and I'm not sure any African-Americans or Hispanics, so please, please, and if you need council help.
All right.
Please.
Will do.
I mean, I know I gave you the name of Jim Johnson, because he would probably, you know, put a pistol in his mouth if he didn't get on this committee. But, but we'll try to do a better job helping you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. John, and I'm going to back up a little bit with what Councilman Mitchell, I would definitely be interested in going on a field trip to see, you know, the effects or the results of some of the ordinances that some of these other cities have passed, and I'm assuming that would happen sometime in January, March timeframe.
I think it'd be more in framing strategies, because I think if you're trying to think about potential strategies, I would think it'd be in the April, May segment, because if you weren't trying to see what communities, like, if they're doing this strategy, you want to see, how is that, right? How does that particular strategy actually work and playing out in the ground? Is that a fair?
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that's kind of, because if you were looking at potential best practices that we might want to consider implementing as a city, I think with a pure city visit would be good, because then you could see, okay, they took this particular type of strategy or tool and applied it, how well did it work or not?
Mr. Attorney, since that would probably involve more than one councilperson on this field trip, does that mean the media's going to have to go along as well, or what?
The issue is whether you are deliberating on the bus or the van as you go around. That is the issue that would come before. You cannot do that outside.
As long, you say, as long as we didn't deliberate, as long as we're just allowing Mr. Bridger to educate us?
You could do that. It might be wise to have some record of what occurred, so that you can prove you didn't deliberate. That's another issue.
John, you'll have staff going along, right, that could be able to document that?
As far as minutes or notes.
Some kind of notes.
Let's work on that. We'll have to figure out the detail. Clearly, we'll need to consult the city attorney in terms of how we set that up. But I would envision, again, that would be probably an April, March kind of setup.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I think I saw Mr. Wilson's hand go up for that trip, didn't I? Judy, you're going to be gone from us, we'll miss you. Dr. Burrs, please.
I've hit both buttons. Now is it on? Can't they just cure the public thing by making a public announcement?
Any action that you took in connection with the meeting that was not following the Open Meetings Act would be a problem.
No, I mean, if the advisory committee meets, can't we just publicly announce that they're meeting?
Yes, as long as it's a public meeting each time.
And then, that's fine.
You're fine. Yes, the question is, if we were talking about monthly public meetings, and I assume there were other meetings that would occur in addition to that, so that's the question.
The other thing is, is there, at some point, we can get a copy of the ordinances that are already on the books?
Sure, we'd be happy to forward you, what's already, we've already began to track some of that. As far as, you mean, in Chattanooga?
Well, yeah. I mean, we already have a clear-cutting ordinance. We don't follow it, but we've got it.
Yep.
So, I'd love to know what other stuff is on the books.
We, that's part of what, I mean, we're already in the process of documenting that.
Good.
So, and again, as part of our, if you'd like, we can do as part of our monthly updates, if there's key materials, documents we come across, we'd be happy to forward them to you as part of those briefings.
Okay. Thank you. That would be helpful.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Burrs. Seeing no other lights. John, before we wrap up this piece, I want to tell a story from Planning Commission. Be about 40 minutes. Okay, Councilman? Now, in all seriousness, this was very encouraging yesterday. Yesterday, we were given a proposal, I won't name the projects or what district. But what was interesting was listening to the engineer and the developer really talk about steep slopes, really talk about staying away from them, being more conscious. And I thought that was interesting, because I think this conversation that we're having is helping. I think it's helping bring an awareness, and I think it's being helpful. And it was interesting, because in two years of sitting on the Planning Commission, I've not really heard that attention being given verbally to the terrain and protection, and I think that it's important to note, and I just wanted to share that with everybody, that I felt that was a good thing that's happening. And I'm glad we're talking about this, and engaging so many different aspects. And I agree with Councilman Mitchell, maybe even a little bit more aspects, if we could fit some other dimensions to this. So, I'm excited. I appreciate you guys got a lot of work going on. You've got Area 12 you're wrapping up, you've got Area 3 that you're starting off, and ADUs and a plethora of other things. So, thank you for you and your staff, for the hard work that you're getting and putting into this, and I appreciate it. And I think we're going to make some, some really good recommendations, and we're going to make, move Chattanooga forward, and we're going to do it responsibly, and we're going to do it together. So, I want to say thank you for that. Thank you. Councilman, Chairman Smith, I see your light.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Hey, John, how's February 5th to present to the council on strategic planning work for you?
The 5th? See, I got, let me see, one thing, 11:30, let me see what that is real quick. Okay, I've got a lunch, but other than that, we're good. We have our lunch thing, but, yeah, we can do that.
We're good.
Yeah, we're fine.
11:30. All right, pencil us in for February 5th for this.
For ADU, follow-up.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, one last. We're going to talk a little bit about Chairman Smith's request, M1. Did we pick that date?
Are we talking about the C2 special permit?
Yep.
Yeah. We would, this would go to Planning Commission, if y'all are comfortable with it, in February, and then we'll come back to y'all for, you know, final action. And I was going to kind of give you a quick overview of what the basic tool regulates.
Okay. Okay, sure. Your, yeah, your committee.
So, just to kind of, you know, just frame the problem, what we heard, the concern was the need for a zoning tool that would consider, on a case-by-case basis, the location of a contractor office and equipment storage in a zone other than M1 and M2. Currently, right now, the way the zoning code's set up, you either need a M1 or M2 to have that use. And so, if, the question becomes, if we're okay with the use, but not the zone, is there a better zone tool option? So, the idea is you would create a special permit in a C2 zone. Now, we all have, think of the, you know, commercial corridor in your, in your community, you know, the Hickson Pike Springer Road, Rossell Boulevard, right? There's different parts of those corridors, some of them have a more of a retail nature, right? And some of them have more of a, a light manufacturing or storage, right, capacity, aspect to it. So, what this tool will enable you to do is say, okay, if the particular area is, already has some contractor-related businesses in the area, and it's makes, it fits in that block, then there's a special permit that you could apply for within the C2, so not have to zone to M1 or M2 to permit that use. But it's on a case-by-case basis, so that's the premise of the tool. The components would include, including you'd have a definition of what that is. It's always important to have good definitions in the enforcement process, to have a definition. Clearly, we would add a special permit option in the C2 zone. We would add some information requirements for the application, so that we can evaluate for the application, so that we can evaluate how compatible it is with the surrounding land uses, as well as criteria, so, and then finally, we have some standards, because clearly, even if you have contractor's storage, you may not want to have the entire site be outdoor storage, right, it's supposed to be accessory to, not a primarily a storage area, because then you have a de facto junkyard, right, I don't think that's the intent, so there would be some standards for the storage, and then there's another important thing to note, there is some language currently in C2 that deals with contractors' offices and outdoor storage, and so we get to make sure when we create this, that it doesn't conflict with some of the existing standards in the C2 zone, so just know that those are the kind of the elements that we would put into a draft ordinance, that would go before PC, and then still show up at y'all's dais for review before it becomes law.
Very good, thank you, John. Chairman Smith, you had another comment?
I do, thank you, Chair. John, thank you, I appreciate you spending a little bit of time on this brilliant idea of Councilman Henderson's. And, I mean, obviously, the concern that I had already raised previously before needing a little bit more time to look into it and go this distance is, we certainly don't want to open up a problem for other CTs around, and you've, I believe you do have it addressed, that it's very specific to certain aspects of the business, some outdoor storage, and then, I believe, total number of employees potentially that are, that are allowed on the spot, and it's based to, based also on similar businesses in the area that may be operating this way, so I appreciate that. Prior to going to planning, can, I'd like to see a draft of it.
Sure.
Prior to that, if you would, and.
I'm happy to forward it to the entire council.
Yeah, the whole council, I'm sure would like to see it before it gets presented in that form, at least I would.
Sure.
But other than that, I, from what I can tell and what you're providing here, it's addressed the main issues that I had, there are certain cases of outdoor lighting and things like that, that I believe are already covered, that would not need to be readdressed, but I just want to make sure that if this was something that we moved forward with, it definitely is, it's buttoned up as tight as we can get it, to where there are just certain areas that could use some additional storage, or may want multiple people to be able to enter the property that just wouldn't work with C2, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
I look forward to seeing the draft, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Councilman Gilbert, I see your light popped up.
Just real brief.
Yes, sir.
I know you said that we're going to look into not having a junkyard, what, what would be, what kind of language would you put in there to keep someone from making a junkyard?
One is how you define contractor's business and storage, so sometimes you say what it is and what it isn't, so we can specifically exclude junkyards, to be clear about that. The second would be in the standards, the standards, if you limit the scale, and it has to be, I think the way our current draft reads it, it has to be associated with the operations of the business, so if you've got any kind of outdoor storage, it has to be part of the product that you're making or distributing from your property, it can't be, you know, a junk car, which has nothing to do with the operation of your air conditioning business, right? So, so there's ways you define it, where you limit the size, and it has to have a direct relationship to the contracting operations.
Let me ask you this way, say that I have a air conditioning place, and I have, I'm in an air conditioning business, but I store these things in a different area that I own, could that be considered a C2?
Say that again, let me repeat that.
If I own a company, and then I store this, these things at another site of my company, under C2.
I see what you're saying.
Outside, is that, can you do that?
It has to be on the same property, the way I've got it written, no, you can't always say, I've got my business on this property over here, and my storage is over here at another property, the way we've got it developed, that would not fly, because that's a stand, that's a separate property over here, even though it's associated with this property over here, for our purposes, because your business is not located here, that's, that's does not, would not meet that definition.
So, their property is the same location, if their office is in the same building, and they can store things outside, I mean, I got issue with junk.
Sure.
I mean, my definition of junk might be his or her definition of junk.
Sure.
How we define what that looks like.
Well, duly noted, we'll, we'll make sure that we, as I understand your concern.
Right.
What I hear you saying is your concern is, we don't want this to be a backdoor for junkyards.
Exactly, but see, the definition, you might say it's a junkyard, but I can say it's not a junkyard, it's just my business stuff I put outside to do business.
Right.
But the, how it would look in an area makes a difference to me.
Got you.
All right.
Well, it also has to be screened as well, just so you know, there'll be screening requirements, but we'll make sure that that's tight.
And screen, and if it's, if it's down low, and you can see it up high, and the screen, it is down there, but you can still see everything in there, I want you to address that also.
And just know that, and that's why this is a special permit.
Okay.
Does that mean, that doesn't mean it's a guarantee, it has to go through Planning Commission and City Council to be approved.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Gilbert. Councilman Mitchell, I see your light.
Thank you, let me go one step further, Councilman, I've got an HVAC business.
Okay.
And I've just replaced a model from a house, put a brand-new one there, and got this old one, and it's part of my business, because it's an HVAC unit, so I'm going to go put it out in that area.
Right.
So, it's a worthless piece of junk, but it's part of my business, what are we going to do to prevent that?
Well, again, partly, the, I guess, the other way you tighten this up is, you limit the amount of area you can use on your property for any kind of storage, so you can't use the entire property for storage, and it has to be screened, and then whatever gets approved, as you know, this is just a starting point, there could be additional conditions that council adds as part of the review of any special permit for this, so it's not a guarantee you're going to get it, you have to go through the public process, you can put additional restrictions as deemed appropriate as part of your review, like any other zoning case, but, again, the way this, as I understand, because the intent is not to create a junkyard, the intent is to have, if you've got any outdoor stores related to the equipment you use for operating your business, or materials, that it's accessory to, it's not a primary part of the property, and it's screened.
Thank you.
Good. John, real quick, isn't there a percentage allowed for storage, though?
I've got to look at, I think it's like sixty percent, I got, I don't have, I don't have the ordinance in front of me.
I'm hearing a whisper of twenty-five percent.
That's under the current C2.
Yes.
Under the current C2 regulations, yes.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson, see you popped up there?
Yeah, well, talking about some regulations on the storing, I guess, junk or outdated equipment, on our, I know on our tire ordinance, you could, you can display, if you have a used tire business, and you're displaying tires for sale, you can have them out, I think, you know, out of a enclosed area, if they're being discarded, they have to be in a different area, and I don't know if we could look at that ordinance and somehow craft it in a way that, you know, that we're storing material for resale, as opposed to what we've salvaged and we're just storing this.
Right.
If that's something that we could.
Well, also, I can refer to that, look at, see what language, if any language might be helpful in that.
What now?
I can certainly look at that ordinance and see if there's any language that might be, and again, I keep, I do want to say this caveat, because I know there's another angel in my ears, my LDO staff, not mine, but our LDO staff partners, whatever we craft needs to be enforceable.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we just need to be careful not to make it, it needs to be clear for enforcement